The June 13th, 2017 Port Orchard City Council Regular Meeting. Please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Our first order of business is the approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or modifications to tonight's agenda? I don't think we can fit anymore on it.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to accept the agenda as presented. Second.
Motion and a second. Any other further discussion of the agenda this evening? Hearing none. All in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the agenda is approved. We are to our citizens' comment period for any items on the agenda. Jerry? Not tonight? Okay. All right. We'll catch you at the tail end. We've got our consent agenda next. Motion to approve the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
The second by Councilmember Donlan. Further discussion of the consent agenda? Hearing none. All in favor of the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda is approved. Chief Wright, where are you? Presentation this evening from South Kitsap Fire and Rescue EMS Renewal Levy. Chief Wright is here before us tonight.
Thank you for allowing me a little bit of time. Before I start talking a little bit about our levy renewal that we have in front of us here on August 1st, our district has a marketing video, but a video about South Kitsap Fire and Rescue. And a few people up in the community have seen it recently. And it was suggested that we take the three or four minutes that it plays to show it. So Randy's going to put that on for us to watch that. And then I'll come back up and talk a minute about the levy.
Popcorn, right?
No. I learn every day, so. Five pieces. Fire District was formed just after World War II when the community was starting to grow. And the citizens, they recognized they need to have some type of organized fire protection. So 1946, they voted to form up a district. And at that time, there were many little districts around the community. City of Port Orchard had its own fire department, Navy Arcy, Rocky Point, Sunny Slope. All these areas were individual fire districts. And over time, they've consolidated into what became and was renamed the South Kitsap Fire and Rescue to better reflect the community we serve. South Kitsap Fire and Rescue is the all-hazards emergency responders for the South Kitsap area. When people call 911 and need help, dispatchers are going to ask if it's a crime, they're going to send the police. If it's anything else, they're going to send us.
It's a group of men, women, people of all different backgrounds and capabilities. They've got administration, we've got responders, we've got fleet specialists, all kinds of people that all work to help make our community a safer place.
There are 12 fire stations scattered around 117 square miles. Six of them are staffed 24/7 by career members, and six are staffed by volunteer officers. There are roughly 74,000 citizens that live within our jurisdiction. We respond on roughly 10,000 calls per year. And the majority of those, 72 percent, are emergency medical in nature. Everything we do as employees here, as responders, as members of this agency, is about maintaining life and making a difference. Because anytime we're dispatched or called, it may be a routine factor for us as responders, but for any given caller, it may be their single most memorable day of their life. It may be their worst day, it may be a very special day. We are called to people in their greatest moment of need. So it's really our obligation to be the best we can be and to provide everything we can within the funding that we have.
Any job where you put on a uniform and a badge, there's a lot of pride that comes with it. You want to be the best you can for, you know, your citizens and your coworkers.
When somebody calls 911, we respond to the scene, be it fire or medical.
You drop what you're doing, and you go, and you help somebody with their problem, no matter how big or small it is.
You'll go from a, you know, a major event, a water rescue, to, you know, just simply helping somebody up their stairs. There's just always something new. It's always a challenge, but you know you're always helping the situation.
We always take the appropriate apparatus for the call.
Every rig that gets there has equipment, has the tools to deliver either the basic life support or the advanced life support.
We don't have any hospitals in South Kitsap, so we transport the patients. That is very much the routine of emergency medicine.
We have a great group of medics on all three of our shifts, very knowledgeable personnel. And to work a CPR and get them to the hospital and have them walk out later and stop by the station and say thank you is, you can't put into words what it feels like knowing that that person wouldn't be here if you weren't there to help them out.
Fires work from both those outside brush fires that we might have seasonally to small-scale fires that happen fairly routine around the community. For South Kitsap, we're primarily a residential bedroom community. And the vast majority of our structures, 30-some thousand of them are homes. But then we get into more complicated things. It could be commercial buildings, it could be some of our industrial situations. We also have the vehicles you see on the highway carrying the products of everyday life. So our fire potential, you know, ranges from fairly routine all the way up into commercial, industrial, and hazardous materials type events. We provide both fire and medical. They are the same people, just putting on a different hat for the call that came in. It's a dual role position that they carry.
I think it's a very fulfilling thing to be able to make the difference in somebody's life, be it simply as picking them up off the floor or being there when they have a critical life incident where they need us right then and there, and we are their only hope. It brings me great satisfaction to know that I can do that and be that person for somebody at that right time.
It's an undescribable feeling to know that somebody's alive, and somebody can have their own family, their own children, and they can, you know, as a parent, the most important thing for me to look forward to every day is kissing my kids good morning and kissing my kids good night. And to know that somebody else has now afforded that opportunity because we did our job right, that's the most rewarding feeling. And you can never compare anything to that, ever.
We come into a crisis where the folks don't know what to do. And we just bring them that knowledge and that information to help them out. And a few tools in the big red truck to kind of help up the process. So even putting out fires, once the fire's out, it's really been we interact with the people and help them get the process moving so their life can get back in order. And we're going to wind it up here. Thank you. Thank you. Well, thank you for taking a moment to watch that with us. Just one of the things we have on our websites that we try to kind of communicate with everyone about what it is that South Kitsap Fire and Rescue does. I'm sure the council's aware that in the middle of our fire district is the city of Port Orchard, which we treat as just all part of our fire district. Our fire district includes 117 square miles, the city in the center of it. And we have about 75,000 citizens in South Kitsap Fire and Rescue's area. A portion of those are inside the city limits. So it all sort of blends together, I'm sure, in the day-to-day routine that you see us coming and going through the community. As far as, one of the reasons I'm here tonight is we have a renewal of our base funding measure on the ballot for August 1st. So about a month from now, the ballots are mailed out as they are, and they're counted, collected and counted on August 1st. So in about six weeks at the primary election. The measure we have before the council or the community is our renewal of our fire levy. Our district is funded on two main levies, one of them being our EMS levy, which is what provides our paramedic program. And then the other levy is our fire EMS levy, which is our main levy. It's, provides three-quarters of the budget for the fire district. It's time to renew that. It's a simple majority ballot measure, and yet we are out trying to just communicate with everyone about that measure. By state law, we can tax it up to $1.50 per thousand for our fire levy. Today, we're at about $1.35. We've been at $1.50 in the past, and we're taking it back to the voters to set it back to the $1.50. That extra 15 cents that we're trying to collect to get us back to our cap is money that I need to help take care of a couple of issues that we've been dealing with for the past three, four years. I became chief three and a half years ago, and one of those things we had to deal with right off the bat was the impacts of the recession. Six months into me becoming the fire chief, we downsized the agency. We laid off 12 firefighters, we closed some fire stations, got everything sort of caught up and smoothed out. But we have not been able to grow the agency. We have not been able to keep pace with the growth that this community's had. We're down from people we had four, five years ago, and yet our call volume continues to grow and the community continues to grow. So the little bit of additional revenue we're asking for on this lid lift is going to allow us to hire some staff back and restaff two of the fire stations that we removed personnel from. One of them being the Glenwood Station, which is in the back entrance of McCormick Woods, and also its sister station over on Banner Road. So one of those is in the city limits, but both of them have a direct impact on our overall reliability as a district based on that 10,000 call mark that we're hitting now this year. We respond to 26, 27 calls per day. And that pulls units from all over the district to cover areas. So if an area is open without the needed coverage, it pulls units from other stations. So the station on Tremont, 31's, our busiest station, is often running out towards the Glenwood area. So the overall building up of the workforce and adding some additional units out there will help the response district-wide and help us keep pace with growth. So that's on the ballot coming up here. I know, you know, we've been communicating with as many people as possible. That's always one of our challenges, is to share the message. As I said, it would be in the school district jargon, which we've watched what the school district's gone through. This is sort of like our M&amp;O levy. We're trying to renew to maintain, and in the case of the little additional revenue to add a little bit back to catch up with growth. Other than that, though, I have time for any questions that anyone have. And certainly, we've been just trying to share everybody with our message because the election's coming up rather quickly now, so.
So mine, because about the video there, the safe boat that you were deploying.
That happens to be, belonged to some people right around here, doesn't that? That's part of that partnership we have with the city police department. The POPD boat is the vessel, and then we provide the crew. And so that's worked very well with the PD being the pilots and the keepers of that. We pay a little bit, I think, each year to help with some maintenance on it. But really, we provide the rescue swimmers and the first aid crews, which is really what we're about with the cold water environment here in Puget Sound, is getting the people out of the water before they succumb to that. So, yeah, we have many, pretty partnerships like that. And really, like I said, with the city being right smack in the middle of our South Kitsap Fire and Rescue, we don't really think about any jurisdictional lines there. It's all just part of where we do our job, so. Are there any questions that I can help answer? Todd, I appreciate you sharing the message. As we all realize, as people in the public sector, it's tough to get people to vote. There are 75,000 citizens that are in the jurisdiction. Half of them are registered voters, and probably a third of them will make this decision. So that's a pretty small slice of our population. So trying to get people to at least take and try to turn the ballot in whichever side of the issue at all. So thank you for your time.
Thank you for coming this evening. Okay, we're moving on here to our business items this evening. So our first item is Business Item 7A, is adoption of an ordinance adopting the Unified Development Code. Mr. Bond.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and members of council. I am pleased to present to you tonight a Unified Development Code ordinance that we've been working on for nearly two years. We've held dozens of meetings, two public hearings, and the Planning Commission in May unanimously recommended its approval. The outline of this code is provided in a table of contents, and it shows how we are consolidating all of our development regulations from titles 14, 15, 16, and 18 into a single title, which will be Title 20. And the staff report documents the extensive public process conducted to date, including, we've also provided a matrix of all the public comments received and corrections that have been made in response to those comments since the draft code was released in February of 2017. The ordinance has the effect of replacing our two interim permit processing and subdivision ordinances. It meets state law requirements for the adoption of an updated Critical Areas Code, updated for best available science by June 30th of 2017. And we have done all the standard Department of Commerce notifications, and we issued a CEPA Determination of Non-Significance earlier this winter. Since the Planning Commission heard this, two items have been raised along with some final corrections from Councilmember Deener, who, thank you, Mr. Deener, for your comments. We, I worked on those this afternoon, and I think he has a handout for you with a handful of corrections. But the two items that were brought up subsequent to the Planning Commission hearing have to do with the Building Code adoption and the SIGN Code. The Building Code adoption, we realized that when we passed that in the June, I guess, last summer, June 20 of 2016, there were a handful of duplications, inconsistencies that we realized needed to be fixed. One of those had to do with the code for existing buildings, which previously was part of the IBC but is now, as of 2015, a standalone document. And so the staff report outlines about 10 items that have been fixed as part of the subtitle 10. And we sent those to the home builders. We didn't receive any comments or concerns with that. I think they're pretty, pretty standard amendments in the sense that they're consistent with state law. The second item that has come up is that the Planning Commission got through their review of the SIGN Code faster than expected. Initially, we had proposed to move the old SIGN regulations from Title 16, Chapter 1665, into the new Title 20, and then to replace them later this summer, once we got done with the SIGN Code. However, now that that is ready to go, we're planning on bringing you a new SIGN Code on June 27th. And so the SIGN Code has actually been removed from the Uniform Code, which means that between now and the end of the month, we have to adopt a SIGN Code, or as of the end of the month, we won't have any SIGN Regulations. And so that's the recommendation at this time. We'll be looking at that at work-study. And then, as I mentioned, Councilmember Deener, he sent an email today. He had a number of minor Scribner's errors and a handful of questions. And so I worked with him in the last half hour before the meeting began to outline those corrections. I think they're all very minor. But he has a handout that he'll be passing out, and I'm recommending that you adopt the Uniform Development Code with those revisions. The first revision that he suggested has to do with an obsolete technology. We still referred to fax machines, and he just wanted to make sure that we said on an application that if you provide a fax number, it's not required, it's only if you have a fax number. Another issue was when the hearing examiner handles a reconsideration. We had provided up to 14 days to file for that, and the hearing examiner apparently prefers a five-to-10 day period. And actually, I think that's the wrong handout. Those were his initial comments to me. He has, I handed him.
You have another one? I'll give you my copy when we're done.
So in any event, the timelines for reconsideration have been shortened a bit, consistent with what the hearing examiner had recommended. The other item, we wanted to make it explicitly clear that home businesses cannot include marijuana businesses in terms of processing, production, and retail. I think that was already in our code, but we wanted to make it crystal clear. And he noticed when he reviewed the home business chapter, which really isn't changing, that we could add that just to bolster that standard. Additionally, there was a change in the subdivision code preferring dashed lines to dotted lines.
Nick, you skipped over the DOD.
And that was intentional. I accident, I meant to delete that from this document, but we printed it about 10 minutes before the meeting, so I apologize. The final plat chapter, we rearranged bullets A through D. D is now B, and then B is C, and C is D. And that was just for the flow of those provisions. Under 2100040, on the second page, we found a very weird provision that was in an existing code that talked about artificially maintaining the water level in storm ponds for visual reasons. And it seems like a pretty big waste of water in this day and age, and probably not consistent with a lot of our goals and... And then finally, we noticed an additional reference to signs that wasn't in our old SIGN Code. It was in a different section, and so we wanted to remove that. And then the subsequent sections were renumbered. And then somehow, three of the sections of the Tremont Overlay District were accidentally removed from the ordinance, and so they're being reinserted. So I think those are all pretty minor corrections, and I would request that if there's a motion to approve this tonight, that those be included in the motion. And so what that says...
And for discussion or a motion?
Well, I just had what I thought was also a Scribner's error on, in our packet. It's page 180. And it's the very, in red, the very last sentence.
What code section is that? My packet I printed did not have the numbering.
Second.
It would be Title 20 Interpretations.
5B.
5B.
On the electronic packets, it's 180.
Yeah. The way I'm reading this is it's discussing interpretations, and this particular area is talking about, it says, "If the city council chooses not to ratify an interpretation through a regular amendment process, after considering such a process, that interpretation shall become void on December 31st in the year the interpretation was issued." Is, are all interpretations this year? Because it's got 2017 in there. And I'm wondering if it should just be...
December 31st.
Just December 31st.
Yes, thank you. That's a good catch.
And I had one other just minor question. And this is regarding the Planning Commission. Let's see. It's under Administration and Enforcement. Yeah, 161 is the page I'm on, and it's number four. And this is just, this is just so I understand the process. It says, "The Planning Commission shall determine whether proposed land use, not specifically listed in the land use table or specifically encoded in the SIC classifications, is allowed in a zone." I have no problem with that. The Planning Commission is going to say, "You can do this activity in this zone, that's okay." I'm wondering what the procedure is to inform council that that's been done.
Yeah, let me just... You know, that was language, I believe, that carried over from the old code, and so it's the first comment I've received on that section. But presumably, they could provide a recommendation to the director under a director's interpretation. But I think we could probably bring something forward to clean that up at a later date. I don't think it comes up very often.
Yeah, it was just, just didn't know the process.
I think any decision is a recommendation to DCD and council.
Mr. Mayor, I have a modified motion, if I may, kick this off. I move to approve an ordinance adopting the Unified Development Code with the suggested amendments as provided in the handout, with an amendment to ordinance Section 23 to set an effective date of July 1, 2017, and accepting the changes contained there and as shown in strike-through under the line. And so that's a little different than what we have on our staff report, but only in the sense that it has the effective date of July 1, 2017.
I would second that.
With the suggested...
Yes.
...modifications. Am I correct? Also dropping that date in the other reference.
I'd take that as a friendly amendment.
Other discussion?
This handout was really more of a comprehensive look, and out of this came a handful of discussion items. And that's what Nick and I spent some time talking about this afternoon. And so with that, I think this is a good piece of work. There was a lot to of it. I think there's more to come, but I think this is a really, really good start, and it's nice to have all this code housed in one area.
I agree. This has been an extensive process, over a year and a half, and happy to have this behind us and the emergency code that we put together behind us.
And I'll add that I also looked through the comments that were given, which were not as many as I thought would be interested.
Right.
And I thought staff did a good job being responsive to the public's comments as well.
I just had one call this week, and again, it was a problem with our boundary line adjustment, which has been an ongoing issue. And, you know, we've done as much as we can, so I'm happy that we have here.
Mr. Clausen?
I was just going to echo Mr. Deener's comments. I think staff did a good job on this process and wanted to pass that on. I know it's been a long, laborious effort to get everybody included, and it's worth it. Thank you.
Okay, we ready to vote? Okay. Got to repeat what Mr. Deener said there. So we're, you'll be voting on adoption of an ordinance adopting our Unified Development Code with the amendments proposed this evening. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, code is approved. Congratulations, Mr. Bond. We are on to Item 7B, Adoption of a Resolution Indicating the City Council's Intent to Hold a Public Hearing to Confirm the Assumption and Rights, Powers, Functions, and Obligations of the Port Orchard Transportation Benefit District. Mr. Martin?
Thank you, Mayor Patanzu, members of the Port Orchard City Council and citizens. This agenda item could be entitled Comedy of Errors. And so on December 8th, 2015, the city council adopted ordinance 02715, establishing a transportation benefit district. On June 14th, 2016, the council adopted ordinance 01016 to absorb the TBD and assume its rights, powers, functions, and obligations. Thereafter, because city staff held the mistaken belief that ordinance 1016 had been adopted in error, the city council was presented with adoption of ordinance 02016, repealing 1016 in its entirety as a duplicate ordinance. City staff has now reached the conclusion that it was mistaken to adopt ordinance 2016, repealing ordinance 1016, as the assumption of the TBD by the city was appropriately accomplished by ordinance 1016. Now, that's a long way of saying that, you might recall, we adopted the TBD, and then the treasurer said, "Oh, we need to assume the rights." And I went through the process to assume the rights, which we did. Then there was some discussion and some confusion, and I said, "Oh, that, we had already," because the statute had changed in between, we started and we ended, "that, oh, now we need to repeal what my changes were because it was unnecessary." So I asked you to do that, and you did. This spring, we went through the audit process, and we got ready to write the annual financial report, which was in your inbox, and I'm sure you probably caught this in that document. The, when we went to write the annual report, I said, "Well, the TBD is a component unit of the city, so it's incorporated within the financial report." About that time, we received from the state of Washington a code number, a municipal number, that identified the TBD as its own entity, which would require it to be its own, have its own financial report. have its own financial report. Following up with the auditors, I confess to my confusion, and they pointed out that said, "Well, you ha..." I said, "We took care of all of this," and they said, "Yes, you did. You did it correctly the first time, but when you repealed the second amendment, you shouldn't have, because you repealed what the correction was correct the first time." So, I said, "Well, I'll have to take it back to the City Council and apologize for the comedy of errors." So this has gone through the state auditor's office. The financial report is correct. There's actually a separate one for the TBD and one for the city. You'll pass this, it will become one unit again. And we're required to have a hearing on this the next time. So this is a correction to my correction that was corrected in error. Is that clear?
Yes.
So basically, by approving this, we're approving the holding of public hearing, and then the second time, we're going to address...
Right. You're going to repeal the repealed ordinance that...
We're going to go back to where we started.
Yeah, you're going to repeal the repealed ordinance to get back to where we started.
Probably have to go through a two-step process to get there.
In an abundance of caution, we want to do it right this time.
If I could add also that there were certain sections of 01016 that weren't perfectly clear, and so we're not only repealing 02016, we're actually adopting a new one that says, "What we did back then, that's what we meant to do." But it says it a little bit more clearly and succinctly.
So my apologies. There was more people involved, but I learned in government that it's best not to scapegoat anybody, so I take full responsibility, because ultimately, I'm responsible. There you have it.
Okay. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution indicating the City Council's intent to hold a public hearing on June 27th, 19... or, excuse me, 2017, on the proposed ordinance repealing ordinance 020-16 and confirming the city's assumption of the rights, powers, functions, and obligation of the Port Orchard Transportation Benefit District.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further discussion? Questions for Mr. Martin? Be voting on holding the public hearing next council meeting on June 27th. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none.
Thank you very much. And I want to thank our city attorney, Sharon Cates, and also the state auditors and everybody else that sat me down and said, "Mr. Martin, you need to look at it this way."
We are on to 7C, Adoption of a Resolution Adopting the Final Platte of Eldon Trails, Division III, McCormick Woods, Phase V. Mr. Bond?
Yes, thank you. This final platte is for the Third Division of Eldon Trails. The preliminary platte was granted approval with conditions by the Kitsap County Hearing Examiner on July 26, 2007. A SEPA MDNS was issued on February 17, 2012. And Division III of Eldon Trails creates 38 single-family residential lots and three tracks. The applicant has installed or bonded for roadway illumination, road sidewalks, landscaping, water and sewer, and storm drainage improvements. Streets within this final platte are for public use and will be accepted into the city's road system. The staff recommendation is to adopt a resolution granting approval of final platte of Eldon Trails Phase, or Division III. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution granting final platte approval for Eldon Trails, Division III.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? Questions? We'll be voting on the approval... or the adoption of a resolution adopting the final platte for Eldon Trails, Division III, McCormick Woods, Phase V. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7D, Approval of an Amendment Number Two to Personal Services Agreement Number 055-16 with Cytel Services LLC. Mr. Martin?
Thank you. The city recently completed its major infrastructure technology upgrade, putting in place new up-to-date hardware equipment and word processing software. Cytel Systems served as IT project consultant and remains on contract for ongoing basic IT support service. This amendment details agreed-to service, expectations, and costs. The amendment provides IT leadership by providing strategic and tactical recommendations, assist with policy, software, and hardware decisions, provide insight into new technologies, best practices, and efficiency opportunities, scheduled support of periodic system maintenance and troubleshooting, ongoing monitoring and support, remotely monitoring servers and other key network equipment. Supplemental services include tracking and prioritizing help desk support incidents and reporting, incident support and project services that provide troubleshooting and problem resolution support as on a need basis, and execute systems as specified by finance and IT management. The services described above provide IT support to the help desk IT support specialist positions contemplated in the day-to-day operation of the IT systems. The city will continue its partnership relationship with Kitsap County IT Department. The Criminal Justice Information Services will remain a major emphasis in partnership with the Police Department, state, and federal agencies. The recommendation is from the City Council. Finance Committee recommends approval amendment number two to contract 055-16 Personal Services Agreement with Cytel Systems.
Mr. O'Grady?
I move to approve amendment number two to contract number C055-16 Personal Services Agreement with Cytel Systems LLC.
Second.
Motion and a second. And I just want to, for clarification, the table of the fees and charges, these are on-call services, so it's not something... As we need them, we will call for the services that they'll provide.
There'll be about... There is some portion of it, because there's going to be a ticketing system and some other fees, and the total cost on a cost basis will be about $6,000, just a few dollars below that. And then the mayor is correct, then the fees will be set on an on-call basis. We budgeted enough for the... on the high end of this, so there's plenty of budget should incident happen, but with new equipment, I really don't see anything in the foreseeable future that would have us have additional costs. Thank you.
Comments? Okay. Voting on the approval of amendment number two for to Personal Services Agreement Number 055-16 with Cytel Services LLC. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to Item 7E, Approval of Personal Services Agreement with Critical Informatics for IT Securities Assessment. Mr. Martin?
Thank you. The city recently completed a major IT infrastructure upgrade, putting in place new up-to-date hardware equipment and word processing software. A major priority going forward is cybersecurity. The city conducted a process seeking an IT consulting firm to assess its IT infrastructure policies and procedures with respect to current cybersecurity best practices. The work will be an additional third-party review that city's IT infrastructure upgrade completed in 2017 and enhanced the city's IT consultant services provider, Cytel. The deliverables will be a report detailing areas of concern, areas of compliance, and a roadmap of implementing solutions and improvements. The objectives of the assessment are as follows: Identify information technology assets in the network environment; Store regulated records; Process financial transactions; And provide life safety, life sustaining, and quality of life services. Identify the security controls applied to those systems; Identify vulnerabilities in the operating environment, including network architecture, infrastructure, and applications; Contact a gap analysis against the National Institute of Standards, Technology, Cybersecurity Framework; And provide a corrective action roadmap for all findings prioritized by risk. An IT study group evaluated three firms and conducted a teleconference interview with Critical Informatics of Bremerton. The outcome is a staff recommendation to enter into a personal services agreement for authenticity, vulnerable assessment against up to 75 IP addresses, and a focused security assessment of the city's security policies and practices. I might say that this was a piece that we could have gone with Cytel with. In consultation with Cytel, they felt comfortable to have a third-party IT person, security assessment. This will really be an effort to write the policies and procedures in place to protect the system that we now have in place, and there's a possibility that we would come back to you after this assessment takes place and roll this too into a longer-term contract where Cytel will monitor the equipment and make sure that it runs correctly and advise the city. And then, informatics would actually be the person that would monitor any kind of cyber attack, any kind of hacking, and provide training and those types of things to make sure that the system's secure. So this would be the final piece. This is a firm that is a local firm. It's well-recognized, so I think the city gets kind of the best of both worlds. You're going to get a local firm that's very well-qualified, that has an interest in the success of the local area, and takes cybersecurity seriously. And then, of course, you'll have Cytel who put the system together so that... so you'll be well-served.
Yes, Mr. Chang?
I move to authorize the mayor to sign a Personal Services Agreement with Critical Informatics, Inc., for Security Assessment Services.
Second.
Motion and a second. You have questions for Mr. Martin? Yes, Mr. Deener?
Were the scope of services otherwise similar between the three respondents?
Of the three, there was... really came down to two. And really, the firm that we chose was pretty much head and shoulders, I think, without any question.
Okay. Other questions? All right. We're voting on the approval of a Personal Services Agreement with Critical Informatics for IT Security Assessment. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7F, Adoption of a Resolution Approving a New Job Description and Salary Scale for the Public Works Supervisor, Water Sewer Utility Manager. Ms. Howard?
Mayor, council members. On October 11th, 2016, the City Council approved an update of the 2007 salary survey to provide the opportunity to make adjustments over time to bring those salaries up to a competitive level. As part of the 2016 salary survey with Northwest Management Consulting, the consultant agreed to consider additional information relating to interviews, job descriptions, or methodology provided by the city departments, where... and then the departments were to forward information to the consultant for review in October of 2017. The Public Works Engineering Department requested a review of the Water Systems Manager. This position was reviewed, and it was determined that this position be revised to a Public Works Supervisor, Water and Sewers Utility Manager, with a salary scale applied commensurate with those responsibilities. The data obtained from this supplemental salary survey improves the city's compensation structure so that there is internal consistency, and at the same time, it is at norm with industry standards. I also want to mention that Brandy passed out the correct amended job description, as well as the salary scale that goes with that job description. The Finance Committee recommends approval of adoption of a resolution approving the new job description and salary scale reflecting the Public Works Supervisor, Water and Sewers Utility Manager position within the Public Works Engineering Department.
And so, just further with this, we started the salary survey ahead of the budget process, and this position was in essence created kind of at the 11th hour as part of this budget process to provide more support to the... This employee was our foreman at the shop, and we promoted him to the Public Works Supervisor. And when we stepped back and looked after a few months of him actually doing the job, we were realizing what he was truly doing versus what we thought he was doing. And so, sewers... Really, what we've added to his job description, which what he was already doing, is the sewers piece of it. He was already supervising the crew at the shop. He was already our water system manager, but he was also taking responsibility for the sewer utility too. So this job description reflects that. And then, in full disclosure... So then, this... Then we had the salary consultant take a second look at this and those responsibilities, and felt that the range was a little bit out of line. So that's the recommendation, is to bring this in line with what the salary consultant is saying. In full disclosure, he'll get... If you approve this, he will get a raise tomorrow, and then we will... As of July 1st, we'll be six months into the year, and he will get his first step, if you look at the steps on here. But I didn't feel... This isn't a promotion tonight. This was just reanalyzing his duties and bringing his salary in line with the salary consultant's recommendation. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the new job description and salary scale for the Public Works Supervisor, Water and Sewer Utility Manager position.
Second.
Just motion and a second. Any other questions? Myself, for Deb Howard? Thank you. So we will be adopting a resolution approving a new job description and salary scale for the Public Works Supervisor, Water and Sewer Utility Manager. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are on to 7G, Adoption of a Resolution Authorizing an Accounting Assistant III, IT Support Special Position, and Eliminating the Land Technician Position. Mr. Martin?
The city recently completed its major infrastructure technology upgrade, putting in place new up-to-date hardware equipment and word processing software. Cytel Systems serves as IT consultant and remains on contract for IT support. The city is currently working with Critical Informatics to provide a security assessment leading to recommended usage policies and enhance security. The city may enter into a long-term agreement for ongoing real-time security services with a firm specializing in such services following the assessment. The upgraded system provides the city the opportunity to realign job duties and responsibilities to meet current needs. The city added a part-time help desk person in 2016 to work directly with employees on user issues. It is proposed that the current full or part-time local area network land technician position be eliminated, and that the city rely on contract vendors for monitoring city servers and be available on an hourly contract basis for services. It is proposed that the city create a second part-time help desk position. The two part-time help desk positions would provide overall IT coverage and work closely with the contract vendors and the operation and maintenance of the IT infrastructure. The attached proposed organizational chart and job description reflects changes to job titles and positions resulting in an accounting III IT specialist position in place of the current full or part-time land technician position. It is proposed that these changes take place in tandem with the amendment to the Cytel Agreement memorializing ongoing services and the authorization of the IT security assessment with Critical Informatics. I might mention that the Cytel system that you approved tonight, contract provides for a, what they... internally, they call a ticketing system. So what that will be is everyone on their device will have an icon to be able to press, and if something isn't working right on their computer, that they will fill out a ticket. They will say, "Here's what's wrong with the device." That goes through the ticketing system, so Cytel will capture that and record it, and then the help desk employees will get that message as well, and it'll be prioritized, and then it'll be picked up through a system itself that's recorded. Does a couple things for you. It lets the contract vendor know if there's a bigger problem, or an ongoing problem, or something's failing. And it also records it. If, in fact, you have a reoccurring problem, you can put resources on it. It also puts the word out to three different responsible parties to correct it. So that's how the help desk will actually work under the Cytel agreement. The mayor did want me to mention to you tonight that the FTE count would remain the same with this. with this. And we do have an individual that is qualified, able to fill an accounting three position and work on the help desk part-time during the day, so that we would have one help person, a desk person in the morning, and then this person in the afternoon. And then, the open position that's eliminated would be an FTE count, and we will fill that with an accounting three position that remains. And that person there will be assigned responsibilities with accounts payable and also for grant administration. The reason and the need for that is because we're moving into some large construction projects, so we need to add support to those two positions. The two positions that I mentioned that are going to garner help in this reorganization are two senior employees. And so, we'd like to start to do some cross-training and to work a mastermind group set so that as changes come up over the next number of years, that the city's well-covered with good employees that understand the workings of the city.
Thank you, Mr. Martin.
Thank you.
Questions or a motion?
I'll make the motion. I move to adopt a resolution approving an accounting three slash IT specialist position, replacing that of the current full or part-time local area network technician position.
Second.
Motion and a second. Any further questions? Mr. Martin?
Yes. Mr. Chang. I think I heard that the land technician's position is currently open, so no one's being let go. Is that correct?
We have eliminated a position. Results in a personnel action.
Okay.
Other questions? Okay. We're voting on the approval of a motion adopting a resolution authorizing an accounting assistant, three, IT support specialist position, and eliminating the land technician. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries.
I'd like to thank the council finance committee for their support, and really, it was a lot of their initiative that started this in 2015, when they said to go ahead and start the process to update this. And it's been a very supportive and very rewarding project that I've been able to work on for you all, so thank you.
Mr. Clausen.
I would like to pass the thank you to the staff for doing a great job working with Cytel. I mean, we now have state-of-the-art equipment, state-of-the-art wireless communication in this facility, and it was all done pretty much on time and within budget, so they did a great job. So, thank you and your staff.
You're welcome. And then, just back to Mr. Chang's question, I mean, those are difficult decisions, and we've made significant upgrades to our, you know, information technology. And it's a matter of deploying our limited resources where we need them, and where we, with the equipment that we've deployed, we have the ability to have this managed by the consultant contracts that you passed earlier this evening, which is a significant savings to the taxpayer. And with the projects at Tremont, McCormick Village Park, the pedestrian pathway, we really need to provide some accounting and grant staff support to Mr. Dorsey and Mr. Martin, so that we don't have any mistakes that cost us a significant amount of money because we're, you know, paying for these projects with federal and state dollars that have very strenuous reporting and documentation requirements. And so, we can't, we've got to have the staff, the proper staff in those departments to manage those projects. All right. Time to move on to the next item. It'd be seven H, adoption of a resolution approving mayoral appointments to the lodging tax advisory committee. I guess that's me. I just never get on that item. So, find it here. Pursuant to Port Orchard Municipal Code 2.22 and state law, the city council should review the recommendations of the lodging tax advisory committee, LTAC, annually, and make appropriate changes by recommendation of the mayor. The mayor is recommending a representative from the following organizations, businesses to serve on the LTAC upon council's acceptance. From the businesses, we, now remember, we have to have, for each business, we can have one representative for a nonprofit. I'm recommending this evening two businesses and two nonprofits. We're trying to get a third business, and when we attract that third one, I'll come back and add another nonprofit. So, the businesses I'm recommending this evening are the Cedar Cove Inn and Mrs. Howe's Bed and Breakfast. And the organizations involved in the activities, the Port Orchard Chamber of Commerce and the Arthritis Foundation Jingle Bell Run. Staff is in the process of contacting one more business required to collect the tax and one more organization involved in the activities to see if they are interested in serving on the committee. If they confirm their interest, staff will bring forward a resolution to the council approving, adopting their appointments to the committee. Recommendation is, the mayor's recommends approving the appointments of the members as presented. Mr. Clausen.
Mayor, I move to adopt a resolution approving the mayor's appointments of a representative from the Cedar Cove Inn and Miss Howe's Bed and Breakfast, as businesses required to collect the tax, and the Port Orchard Chamber of Commerce and Arthritis Foundation Jingle Bell Run, as organizations involved in activities to serve on the lodging tax advisory committee.
Second.
Easy for me to say.
Motion and a second. And really, why I'm bringing this forward now, so many times, if we continue to work this, then Mr. Chang's committee does, gets delayed, and then we end up late into the budget process with the LTAC recommendations. So, this allows Mr. Chang's committee to get working, and hopefully, we can add some more bodies to it at a later date, so... Other questions? Okay. We're voting on the mayor's LTAC recommendations. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We're on to seven I, authorizing the public works department to establish a taxi stand along Bay Street and/or a loading zone along Sydney Avenue pursuant to Port Orchard Municipal Code 10.12. You waited around all night for this, Mr. Dorsey.
I would like to point out, though, that my two items are 1,033 and 1,036 of the packet, but I only printed out these few pages to save the trees. Thank you, your honor, council members. So, on May 17th, 2017, the City of Port Orchard Land Use Committee reviewed a request for a taxi stand along Bay Street in front of the Brick House Bar, which used to be Moon Dogs Two, and a loading zone in front of the Sydney Museum along Sydney Avenue. In general, the land use committee supports the loading zone request and not the taxi stand request, but requested further council discussion and action. Loading zones are allowed pursuant to Port Orchard Municipal Code, Chapter 10.12200, and we have a copy of that attached. So, staff recommends that the city council authorize the public works department to either establish a taxi stand along Bay Street in front of the Brick House and a loading zone in front of the Sydney Museum along Sydney Avenue, or just in front of the Sydney Museum along Sydney Avenue. So, you have two options on your recommendations, and I believe I didn't screw up what the land use committee had said, so, thank you.
Mr. Deaner.
Mr. Mayor, I move to authorize the public works department to establish a loading zone in front of the Sydney Museum along Sydney Avenue.
Second.
Motion and a second. Further discussion? My only concern would be that, right there, there's only two parking spots on Sydney, and there's two apartments right there next door. So, are we going to displace those folks that live in that apartment? Would it be better for the loading zone to be over on Prospect?
That was, that was going to be my question. First of all, Prospect is flat, and it's easier to get things in and out of a car, and they have access to both the back door at the Sydney Gallery or the front door. If it's on Sydney, that parking spot is at an angle, and it's a little more difficult. I'm just wondering if it would be more efficient to put it on Prospect.
Sounds like a motion.
I think we need to vote on the motion on the floor first.
I mean, that's just a discussion, and I don't know whether the Sydney Museum and Art Gallery, you know, if they have a preference.
That's what I was also curious.
Would staff like to reach, throw a wrench in this, but would staff like to reach back out to them and see if that's acceptable?
Did they have a formal request, or do you remember?
Yeah, they made a request. They made a request to the city through the mailbox, I believe, city mailbox. So, like I said, this was mainly on here for discussion and went through land use. You know, my sense is really whether somebody on Sydney in the apartment has to park on Prospect, or they park on Prospect. I guess if we would be doing this, we'd be doing it to accommodate the Sydney Museum's need, and if, and potentially, you could rephrase this motion that we support a parking space or a loading zone for the Sydney Museum to be determined, and just, because again, I don't, you know, my perspective is, we're doing this based on their request. It seems like we're accommodating that, so I can either reach out or you can...
That's not a bad workaround, to say to approve a loading zone, and staff in the Sydney Museum work out the best location for that loading zone, whether it's on Prospect or on Sydney.
Yeah. That way, I don't have to bring it back.
Ms. Lucrello.
I have a question. When Sydney Museum is not open, would that parking space still be held as a loading zone for it?
Right. But it's, it's like with any loading zone, or even on the weekend, we have two-hour limits and four-hour limits that, they're not enforced, because parking enforcement isn't out, so...
It is a loading zone for anybody. It wouldn't necessarily be, it's going to have a, what, 15 or 30-minute loading zone? We can't say for Sydney Museum on it, it's a loading zone for it.
Is there any other provision that could be made that that space would be held while the museum is open?
You'd have to force, you know, if you happen to be in the parking spot, when they open up, now all of a sudden, your car's in violation because it just became a loading zone.
Okay. I'm just wondering.
Good question.
I can just comment that having been recently at the museum, there are some times when they do need to drop people off who want to walk in the museum, and I remember thinking, if someone's parked there, they have to double park to let a pedestrian out to get into the museum. A lot of their current members need flat surfaces to walk in. So, it could be that maybe the landing on Sydney would help them.
On Prospect, you mean?
Well, I think on Sydney. I think they did want it right by the entrance, yeah.
I guess I look at, I don't know how much artwork comes in and out, or if it's pretty static year-round, but to me, the loading zone would be more being able to deliver...
People.
Or people or artwork that they're going to change out, so that you're not, you know...
Mr. Clausen.
Well, I just, you know, to me, I agree with Beck that on the level of Prospect would make a lot more sense, but I don't know the ins and outs of doing that. So, I think Mr. Dorsey's suggestion of changing the motion to allow the engineer to work with the museum and figure out which is the best location.
Mr. Turney, would you like us to vote on the motion on the table, or would you allow a friendly amendment?
I would allow it a friendly amendment.
Okay. So, it sounds like we may have a friendly amendment being asked for to allow that loading zone to be determined by Public Works and the museum staff. Is that accepted to the motion maker in the second? Accept that?
Yes.
All right. So, yes, Mr. Chang.
I just have a different question. Can you tell me some of the reasons that went into the committee deciding that a taxi stand on Bay Street was not feasible, or...
I would defer to the committee chair to just, to go into that description.
So, one of the discussion items was that there is a taxi loading zone not too far away.
By the foot ferry?
Yeah.
A block away.
Yeah. And then, I think there was also some questions about how necessary is that in the course of operations for Brick House, particularly when some of the clientele are there later at night, and coming out, there's not as much traffic. So, I think the committee just felt in general, there wasn't as much of a compelling need for that there versus the loading zone.
Plus, I believe it is because there was a parking space, it's taking a parking space right on Bay Street.
Right. That's right.
And there is a loading zone just to the west, like in front of the Dance Gallery?
For...
Well, it's a loading zone. It's just a loading zone, but the taxi could easily pick people up there.
Oh, Frederick, okay. Now, that makes sense because parking is very scarce on that block. I understand that it's very hard to come by because of the, some of the certain residents or tenants. So, that would take away a spot, which is needed, so, okay, thank you.
Other questions? Okay. We'll be voting on authorizing the public works department to establish a loading zone at the Sydney Art Gallery, and Sydney Museum along Sydney or on Prospect Avenue to be determined by Public Works and the museum. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the motion carries. We are to committee reports. The finance committee, Mr. Clausen.
Just reporting that the next one is scheduled for the 26th, 7:30 here.
Economic Development and Tourism?
Yes. We met yesterday, and as we have since the first of the year, we start our meetings with the discussion with the business community. And we have decided to take a break for the summer with that part of our agenda, and we'll be starting that up again in September, October, when people are back from vacations and not as busy with their events. Our other two agenda items, one was a trademark policy for our new Wayfinding logo, and we discussed the sign ordinance. Both of those will be coming forth to work study. I believe the sign code ordinance will be at the June work study and the trademark at the July work study.
Thank you. We are to the utility committee. Have you met?
Yes. We are going to be meeting June 19th at 9:30 here at City Hall. And to continue on, the sewer advisory committee will be meeting, actually, tomorrow, June 14th at 6:30 at the sewer plant, rather than a week after.
Thank you. Land use is next week. I don't believe you've met since our last meeting. It's next Wednesday at 7:30 in the morning, I believe, 21st. Lodging tax?
Nothing to report.
All trends and lights?
Yes. That meeting will be next Monday at 3:30 here at City Hall.
Okay. And as Beck pointed out, I've been skipping over other agency reports, and many of us serve on other boards, so, do you have anything from KRCC, the retreat?
Just that, we attended the retreat last week focusing on, we had presentations regarding the growth of, the past growth of Kitsap and the future growth. We saw, we saw slide presentations of the forest, the tree cover from like, was it 1990 to current, and it focused on our McCormick Woods area. It was kind of enlightening to see the changes up there. But that will move forward to a, a working, a work plan for the jurisdictions within Kitsap to put together ideas for the Vision 2040, how we want to be involved in that, and start preparing us for our next round of growth assumptions that we have to take. The other committee that I sit on, the PSRC Transport Committee, I've been sitting on what's called a finance working group, and we've been meeting since last fall, and it is looking at funding and, well, expenses, and then funding and revenue sources for transportation out to 2040. And I must say that that is quite a challenging endeavor to figure out where the money's going to come from to pay for the, all of the infrastructure, the traffic infrastructure, that's, transportation infrastructure, I should say, that's going to be needed. So, that's what we've been working on. So, that's what we've been working on.
All right, and I am, uh, just Kitsap Transit, uh, world, uh, excited to report that, uh, we're very close to implementing the fast ferry service, so, July tenth. I know Mr. Clausen reported at our last board meeting that the crews have been hired, um, and, uh, don't see any reason we shouldn't be operating those boats on July tenth, so, make your reservation soon. Um, mayor's report, uh, you had the DIAS, and Brandy, if you wanted to throw, you know, we've s- been bantering around these concepts, pocket parks, so this is the, the final concept. Uh, on the back of that same piece of paper, you'll see, uh, Mr. Dorsey's estimates, um, and you can see that the waterfront park is estimated at about six hundred and forty thousand, and the Rockwell Park would be about four hundred and fifty thousand. These are rough order of magnitude estimates. The next step, and what I've put Brianna on, is that we need about a hundred thousand dollars to finish these concepts, two designs, and then we would have much better engineer estimates from those, and, you know, we talked about things like a water feature and what that would cost and so on and so forth, so, those would come out of those final designs. So, I just wanted to share with you, uh, this project's done until we get to the next step, which would be the, the final, final designs of those parks. Um, we lost, uh, I think it was New Year's Day, we, in a big storm, we lost our flagpole out here in the triangle. Um, it fused itself to the, uh, to the transmission mains there. Um, I've been, I've gotten a number of comments about that, when we're gonna replace it. I reached out to, uh, the port and talked to them a bit about maybe moving it over to, by the boat launch, and I talked, my goal was, we've had these, all these small cell folks come and talk to us about wanting to implement that technology, so, thought I was serving them up a softball, and, uh, I've made about three phone calls, talked to one of them once, and nobody wants to call me back on it, so, um, moving on. So, Thomas Hunter and I have been talking, we believe we can, uh, I think that was about a forty-five-foot pole, this is a thirty-five-foot pole out here. If we put a thirty-five-foot pole out of fiberglass, the other one was steel, i- if we had an incident, it would pass underneath the power lines versus hitting the power lines, so it'd be a little bit smaller, it will hold the same size flag, it'd just be ten feet shorter. Um, the cost is about fifteen hundred dollars for the flag and about, or flagpole, and about a thousand dollars for Public Works labor and materials to jackhammer, the base that's there out, pour a new base, and install that flagpole. So, is there desire, I've got Mr. Valist and some other veterans folks that, that really, there's a mo- there's a monument there for, uh, from a veterans group in nineteen thirty-three that that pole was dedicated to, so it's fairly significant to our community. Mr. Clausen?
Mr. Mayor, I think that's an important, uh, asset to our city, and I've heard comments as well about it, missing and wondering when it's gonna be replaced, so, I would move that we authorize the mayor, uh, to move forward with the, uh, reinstallation of a flagpole with Public Works not to exceed three thousand dollars.
Okay.
Second?
Second, motion a second to replace the flagpole out, uh, in the triangle for not more than three thousand dollars. Other, just, further discussion of that? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Hoo hoo.
Hearing none? Get a flagpole put up. We got our new twenty-seventeen population numbers, and we grew by a hundred and eighty citizens. We're ten short, though, of fourteen thousand, so we're thirteen thousand, nine hundred and ninety citizens in Port Orchard, so, we'll be changing the numbers on the signs. Um, if you haven't noticed, on our webpage, there's a button for the Tremont Project. Um, you'll find that on our webpage, click on that, get all kinds of information, and in the future, traffic updates about the project and detours, so, uh, we've put that up. Um, the apparent low bidder now is active construction, and our packet was left yesterday to Wash Dot.
Yeah, it's a, Wash, the pre-bid, pre-award evaluation document that will be a part of our packet on the twenty-seventh, is at Wash Dot Headquarters right now.
Wonderful, and we're working towards awarding that contract on the twenty-seventh, and how does everybody feel about a groundbreaking ceremony on July seventh? It's a Friday?
Yes, yeah.
Does anybody have travel plans that week?
I'll be back.
Yes, I'll be gone. But that's okay. You can break ground without me.
Wow, okay. You sure? I can get, Jan and Jesse are both available, I haven't heard back from Michelle yet, so...
Do you have a time?
I haven't gotten that far, I was just more than a...
Afternoon would be just cool.
Afternoon?
Afternoon would be perfect.
I was hoping, we probably don't wanna do it too late in the afternoon, 'cause we'll interfere with rush hour traffic, but, um...
They can all see it.
They can all see it, but...
I, I'm thinking like...
Two?
Anytime from noon on, this afternoon.
One, how about one o'clock?
One.
One P.M.
Okay.
Okay? All right, and that's all I have. Uh, reports from the department heads. Mr. Dorsey?
Uh, I think we just had it, so...
Okay, and, well, I mean, hats off to you and, and the engineer's estimates and everything that, I mean, I, sorry, I stole your thunder there, but, you know, I mean, you've done a heck of a job on this Tremont Project.
Oh, thank you.
On everything.
Mr. Martin?
Uh, nothing.
Okay, Mr. Bond?
Uh, nothing other than, uh, we've requested an executive session at the end of the meeting.
Yep, and what, so what sections of code are you bringing next?
Well, the sign ordinance will be here on the twenty-seventh, and after that, we're gonna start work on the design guidelines and zoning code updates, and, um, I think I'm just going to work on moving first before I initiate anything else too big.
Yeah, we're about, contractor may be done about the end of next week, so, first week in July, we should be moving Nick and his staff over to the new building over there, and it's, it's coming along quite nicely.
Is there gonna be groundbreaking there, too?
Would you, I, and we might have a little reception or something before a council meeting and a ribbon-cutting meeting or something.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
Yeah, so, Sharon?
Yes, I'd just like to say that I've been on vacation for the past two weeks, and I just wanted to thank city council, the mayor, and city staff for not allowing any legal emergencies to arise during that time, so I had a very relaxing vacation, so thank you.
Okay. Deb Howard, would you like to give a report on, are we fully staffed?
Not yet.
Doesn't seem like we ever are.
We're gonna be bringing on, um, our part-time court clerk, another summer hire, and then hopefully in the next month or month and a half, another police officer, for Officer Jerry Jensen is retiring, so, I'm still there, getting more people on board.
All right, we're, we always get close and then...
I know.
Somebody retires on us. Brandy?
I have nothing.
Other than executive session. Okay, we'll, uh... Mr. Mayor?
Yes? If, if I may, just add one thing, um, you had mentioned the, the start of the ferry service on July tenth. Actually, I'd like to extend an invitation on July fifth, we're going to have a little ceremony over on the waterfront in Bremerton next to the ferry dock, and, uh, the governor has graciously agreed to come in, uh, speak, and, and Derek Kilmer will be there as well, so, eight-thirty A.M. on July fifth.
That's a Wednesday.
Eight-thirty?
Correct, eight-thirty A.M., and...
That's the night after Fourth of July.
You notice that?
Yeah.
And if you were interested in going for a little boat ride after the ceremony, we're gonna have a training opportunity for our crews and our ambassadors to, uh, load a full boat and take you for a short...
Man overboard right there.
Spin around the block, sort of thing.
Me.
What time was that again?
Eight-thirty in the morning.
Eight-thirty A.M. on July fifth.
Bremerton.
Bremerton, not a waterfront.
Okay, thank you for that update. Okay, we're to citizens' comments. It's Jerry.
Hello, Jerry, I was just talking about on the Sydney Art Gallery, um, loading zone, they change out their artwork every month, they have a different theme every month, and one of the things is that there's all these people who are putting the spot in front of the specific departments, and I, it's gonna be a hard decision, because one of the things is parking, they have a, an artist that is featured, so that person has probably more than one item that they are having to, that they get a section of the art gallery, so they might have, and then out in that, the prospect is, you know, quite a bit more worse. And also, a lot of the, they have receptions every month, and, and as I was just saying, a lot of the members are in their teens, and just even though it's not one of the of a, a teenager that's been working here, years old and trying to get out and get into the art gallery, is a problem, so, that's a lot of, that's what I was saying. I was also going to say, maybe it's just my, the city and my, um, van, and I stopped on Kitsap and Sydney going up there, trying to see cars coming up, and as I got to edge out and edge out to where I can see, there's usually a big truck parked right in that top spot, and personally, I have a difficult time making sure I don't get hit across the air, 'cause I'm always so, I'm sure I'd see that first part, it's, I've gone, because I can't see the cars coming up here. Um, and then, I watched a video, and I'm still familiar, about a museum where they're using plastic grounded models as a new, um, installed laptop, and it looked very interesting, it's on trial, if you see, it lasts longer than that, not as many repairs, and the children asked to find out if it's something that is really working, and it's supposed to be cheaper than that, so something for, and I had up here, Puget Sound Regional Council, 'cause we hadn't heard anything on a lot of, I think, a few months, and since, to me, they have a lot of what goes on here, um, I was wondering, can we just, um, so, there, that's why I'm saying...
Beck caught me, and she told me, got a report on that. So, unfortunately, we gave Mr. Dorsey the latitude to work it out with the museum and figure out what's worked best, so... Mr. Whittleton, you have anything for us? Mr. Rosa Pepe? And Bobby.
Sorry. I'd like to say thank you to the mayor and the council, and Mr. Dorsey, uh, if he can accept that school district prize of the Tremont Project, we're gonna be greatly affected, but if you feel like it would be a mission to God, then we gotta plan a program, so, uh, it'll be a partnership, if it needs some effort.
You're welcome. Bobby Stewart? Oh, yes, you have something to add, Cindy?
After Bobby.
Okay.
I'm just, um, president of the, um, art community, and I just wanted to thank you for approving that, because, um, no matter where you put it, it can really help not only the artists, but the recipients, and it's truly needed, and also, I just wanted to make the council aware that we might be losing our time shop downtown because they are retiring and selling their business, I know we're not in the business of real estate, but I just thought maybe someone would know, somebody that might be interested in it, so I just wanted to put that back up there, and I have tried to work on it, but I'm not very equipped to that, so, um, they're surely closing the end of July.
Wow.
All right, thanks for that update, Bobby. Okay, we are done with all of our business this evening, we're gonna go into, how long do you think we nick?
Cindy.
We're gonna...
Oh, Cindy.
Oh, I'm sorry, Cindy.
I just wanted to comment, um, I'm not sure how many of you are aware, but John Hokinson died recently, and John is our neighbor, lived right down the street, kept a beautiful home, and, um, he was on the planning commission, it says, in his obituary for twenty-eight years. So, he was around and someone well-known in this community. Just wanted to let you know that he died, um, May twenty-ninth, so...
Thanks for that. Um, okay, we're gonna go into a brief executive session for fifteen minutes regarding ongoing litigation.
But I'm, I'm recusing myself.
And you're accusing yourself.